Welcome, everybody. Full house tonight. Welcome to the Tuesday, March 19th, 2024 Board of Education meeting. We have all trustees present. We always begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd like to stand and join me, please do.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have four elements of recognition tonight. And we were going to start with the first mission moment. We're going to move that because we've got a couple of principals involved who are delayed with other events. So they will join us in a moment. So we're going to begin with item B, State Schools of Character, and we're going to honor Larson Middle School. This is Dee Plato.
Good evening.
Good evening. Dr. Macheski, Mr. Schmidt, members of the board, thank you for having us this evening. This evening, we'd like to honor Larson Middle School for receiving the State School of Character Award. This is the first step in the national recertification of Larson. Character.org certifies schools and districts that have developed and implemented an intentional, proactive, and comprehensive approach that embeds character into all aspects of school life. The journey to becoming a school of character is comprehensive and involves each school showing how they embed key characteristics into their everyday work. This framework includes creating a caring school community where everyone feels they belong, providing students with opportunities to practice and reflect on their character strengths, and engaging families and communities as partners in the school's character initiative. Larson was the only school in Michigan and one of only 87 schools in the country to earn the 2024 State School of Character Award. This is the third time Larson has earned this recognition. The previous years were in 2018 and 2019. Larson Middle School has now earned the right to apply for a National School of Character Award. We'd like to congratulate Larson. We are very proud of the time, effort, and dedication you have put into making Larson the kind of learning environment where students feel included, encouraged, and nurtured to succeed. I am joined by the very proud principal, Mr. Zwizlak, who's going to say some words and introduce his team.
Thank you, Dr. Macheski, Board of Education. We appreciate the recognition. In my years of education, I always wanted to be part of a character education. I think I hit the jackpot with Larson. They are the trailblazers of character education. But the one thing that struck me when I met them for the first time was their reflective growth mindset. Here they are, they're at the top of their game, and they still want to make a better experience for our students at Larson. And so I'm so proud of our committee that we have here with us because they've taken what was an award-winning program and have taken it up a notch. So right now, what we did was we incorporated our web program, Where Everyone Belongs. So our eighth graders are working alongside with the sixth graders as mentors. So the sixth graders are getting mentored by the eighth graders. Our seventh graders are going through a character-strong curriculum. This year, they're reflecting on emotions and how to regulate those emotions. And our eighth graders are taking all the learning they've done during their sixth and seventh grade year, and they are applying it in service learning this year. So just recently, actually today, our eighth graders visited their feeder elementaries, and they did reading with their Marches Reading Month, to celebrate March's Reading Month with their feeders, and to have the students reconnect with their former teachers and then be role models for the students was so heartwarming for myself and all our staff that joined in the celebration today. So without further ado, I am just a brief, I get to celebrate this, but I would just ride the coattails of all these people here behind me because they have been doing this work for a long time. So I just want to introduce our team. If they can come up and join me. We have Assistant Principal Steph Henning. Our Character Committee co-chairs Charlie Toll and Jen Rogers. And then we had some additional staff members that really helped in this. How many pages was the application?
Forty-two pages with two documents for every principal, so around 75 when it was all sent out.
So beyond that, we had Jackie Parker, Cindy Christensen, and Shannon Gibbonsky help with that application process. So if you guys could go on and steward. Charlie's really been along for the entire journey, so I'm just going to let him say a few words about that experience we've been on so far.
Oh, thanks.
I hope he warned you.
I love speaking to you, but this is such a hard thing when we don't speak to the crowd. But I always feel like in the future, we need to set this off to the side at a different angle. So if I turn around at some points, don't feel I'm being disrespectful in any way. This has been an amazing journey. We have been on this journey really all the way back to about 2009 because we started with just this policy, and you might have heard of different initiatives like anti-bullying and some of those components, and really trying to just get a day to work through some of those things. And this has led in a journey all the way up to now we have an embedded character program at Larson. We have students mentoring students, as Mr. Z had just said. And we have really a culture that I think, all these people here in this room with us, but all of this, there's just a culture in Troy, and it's all rowing and moving in a direction I think is super positive. And you have a tremendous staff back here that is a huge part of that. And it's not just Larson. Larson's a wonderful place. We're doing lots of great things. And I'm super excited. My daughters have come through that school. I have a sixth grader there right now. I have a senior in high school in Athens. So thank you, Athens staff. You've been fantastic. But it's more not just about what we're doing. It's the relationships we're building. It's the ability that students feel comfortable to come to school every day and are surrounded by a staff as well as administration that just cares about them. And they care about each other. They care about our school. And I think that is the model I think we can continue to grow in Troy and in every building. That sense of like, I feel good to come to school. I'm excited to be part of a learning community. I'm excited to be around students that care, around staff that care for us, not just to teach us, but they care about your weekend, they care about your day, they care about the things that are going on in your life. So all of that grows into our character. So I'm just a piece of that. And I'm super excited to be part of that, but hope to continue to grow that in our district. So thank you for your time. These people that are next to me are just fantastic, and I'm just grateful to have them as part of this journey as well. So thank you so much.
Charlie, if you don't mind. Yeah, Charlie, if you don't mind, get in the group together there. We'd like to get a picture.
And if you ever come up here, there's some cool art down there. We'll leave that there.
Actually, Vitell, if you want to stay down.
Okay.
Carl, if you want to just. Thank you, Brian, Charlie. Appreciate it. Thank you. Next, under recognition, it's our opportunity to recognize the All-State Band and Orchestra students. We've not actually done this at board meeting before, but this is something we're going to do into the future. These young men and women work really hard within their craft. And similar to recognizing our state all-state athletes on a regular basis, we're going to begin recognizing these All-State Band and Orchestra students. There are 30 Troy District musicians were chosen to be members of the 2024 Michigan All-State Ensembles. They represent each of the Troy School District's four middle schools and three high schools. Additionally, eight students were recognized as honorable mention. These students were in Grand Rapids, January 25th through the 27th, to rehearse and perform with musicians from around the state. Each fall, thousands of students work diligently to prepare for the audition with hopes of joining one of these elite ensembles. At this point, it's my pleasure to ask Mr. Havrila to the podium to introduce our winners in each of these particular areas. Students, we're going to ask, as your name is read, to go over, pick up your certificate, mom and dad, or whoever is here to help celebrate with you. If you'd wish to get a picture, please feel free to do so. And then after, and then go sit back down. And then at the break, we'll take a five-minute break because there's so many of the students. At the five-minute break, we're going to ask you to assemble in the lobby, and we're going to get a group picture. Okay? So Mr. Havrila, thank you.
Thank you very much. These students, as Dr. Macheski said, there are thousands of students. They're the elite of the elite in each of their school districts. And they all audition. They go through a process in the fall. And many school districts are thrilled if they can get one student from one of their schools who are able to qualify and are successful in this. And Troy Schools is successful over and over again. And you see that when we have not just one or two students, but 30 from our program. So I'll start here by calling off those students. And as he said, as you're called off, come on up here and get a certificate.
And Mr. Havrila, I'm sorry, I misspoke. Before you begin, I don't want to interrupt you. We're going to ask the parents to wait for pictures until afterwards, out in the lobby. Okay?
All right.
Thank you. Sorry, parents.
No problem. All right. For the Michigan High School All-State Orchestra, if these students are here, come on up as I call your name, collect your certificate, and then, as they said, have a seat once again. We have Karen Jin, Ray Owan, Jing Yi Ma, Benjamin Shang, Emily Bake, Jisoo Park, and Danielle Lee. For the Michigan All-State Band, we have Hallie Chen, Jay Shin, Angela Park, Sahana Mukund, Brian Feng, Daniel Lee, Soham Kapoor, Brian Liu, Shabani Sangupta, Brandon Mendoza. At the middle school level, All-State Orchestra students were Chloe Kim, Shi Yun Jun, Gabriella Murphy, Suhana Reddy, Ariel Song, Brian Zhang, and Leon Ma. And for the middle school All-State Band, we have Andy Zhao, Aryan Kadkar, Anson Pingri, Pooja Raj, Tanishi Swami, and Landon Taylor. And I just want to say thank you very much to our board and to our administration for being extremely supportive of the arts and especially of the music program and also this wonderful community that supports it and loves the music and the fine arts. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Havrila. Appreciate it. We look forward to recognizing those students on a regular basis. Under our student spotlight this evening, before we circle back to the first item. For our student spotlight, we're here to recognize the creative achievements of students in the Troy School District Creative Guild. It's my pleasure to recognize Mr. Thomas Butcher, and he will introduce our host for the evening.
Of course. Thank you, Dr. Macheski, and good evening to our Board of Education. I am grateful for another opportunity to present for Student Spotlight here tonight. As we turn the corner into spring, I think about those students whose time with us is nearing an end, who we all will surely miss. Senior year goes by very fast, and heck, at this point, they're practically alumni. Unfortunately, I have one of these soon-to-be former students standing next to me. Simi Sharma is a senior student from Troy High School. She does choir and a cappella. She's in the announcements class. And this year, she has served as the president of the Troy High Film Club. I know I've mentioned this club here before. And as a reminder, one of the biggest things they do for their school community is the Survivor Film Series, where multiple episodes are produced within a week to help raise money as part of Troy High's Activist Week. As president, Simi helped to coordinate between student government and film students, producing roughly 40 minutes of content equivalent to an hour-long TV show, achieving what many might call an impossible task. It's certainly more than I would want to do. So thank you, Simi, for doing your part for the thousands raised this year. But of course, Simi has also been a key member of the Creative Guild. We, or I, have kept her very busy. From pinpoint editing on Troy Theater Ensemble's Footloose trailer to a basketball rivalry documentary produced in collaboration with their very own board rep, Jayla Turner, Simi continues to deliver incredible work no matter what we, or I, throw at her. We're going to play for you a few minutes of Simi's various projects. But first, I'll say, she might not give you the most typical take-charge impression of herself, but Simi Sharma is a leader. She has found her own way to contribute to her community, leading from behind the camera and on to the screen. And before you become an official alumna of our school district, we, not just I, hope you will continue sharing your filmmaking and editing talents with all of us. After spring break, of course.
Troy versus Athens, the big hometown rivalry. The energy when these teams play against each other is unmatched. With another season heading to a close, we spoke to players and coaches to find out what this community event means to them.
It's a great experience, and it should be a big crowd. And it should be exciting. And we just want to play as hard as we can and as well as we can. And hopefully, we get to win.
You know, at the end of the day, we are student athletes. You know, in that athletic field or the court is an extension of the classroom.
Yeah, at the end of the day, like both teams, even though it's rivalry and it's competitive and stuff, at the end of the day, we all are still friends, and we all come together as like one school district.
In this challenge, one teammate will lead their other teammates who are blindfolded through a maze to find puzzle boxes.
This dude, Mr. Bullmare, somehow, I don't even know. Like, I need to see. He gets all the way on our side. And Mr. Ramoni, like, I guess this shows like, you need to get him off the staff, maybe, because like, this is cheating.
I followed the rules. I was blind. I got really disoriented. I had to revert to echolocation. It was like I could see the world, the world, and finally using sound waves and the law of reflection. It was amazing. Everything was totally visible to me once I started echolocating.
We will now open to any potential comments or questions from the board. But first, Simi, if you'd like to say a few words, the mic is all yours.
So my initial interest in video making was led through fellow students and peers. First, through the Film Club. And then I joined the Troy High Announcements, which was also a learning process, working with other students. So I never really had a specific mentor until I joined the Creative Guild and got to work with Mr. Butcher. And I got to learn so much through doing these projects and getting these opportunities. And I'm so thankful to have the opportunity to pursue my interests. And I also want to say thank you to my parents for supporting me and just letting me do what I like to do. Thank you.
Okay, you're going to drill her with questions? Go ahead.
Not going to drill her. So what is one of your favorite projects that you've worked on while you've done this?
I feel like in general, Survivor has just been so fun. It's been stressful, it has, but working with so many people, it's like the fact that it's like a reality TV show is just so fun to work with. So Survivor is pretty fun.
Yeah, Mrs. Brennan sent me them. They were pretty fun to watch. Yeah, they sent me to them. Mrs. Brennan sent me the Survivor videos as they were happening. You guys did a great job. It was fun to watch.
Christian, go ahead.
So what's next for you? Do you see yourself continuing to pursue film as a vocation or a hobby?
As a career, I'm going to like art school. So I feel like I'm interested in pursuing it as a minor in college. And that's just, I feel like it's something I see myself doing in the future. So yeah, it's definitely a big interest in part of my life.
Well, good luck to you. You've got a lot of talent.
Thank you.
I have one question for you. If you think about all your projects that you've done since you've been in the Guild, is there one where you felt it really built your skill set in new ways? And if so, what was that project? And why did you grow through that project?
I think last year, I did a Synchro video, and I really enjoyed like working through the video matching with music. And I just tried to figure out what was appealing and what wasn't. I feel like from that, I really progressed. And also this year, Footloose. I know it was just a few weeks ago, but Footloose was really enjoyable for me.
Okay, great. Hold there, we've got a certificate for you. Thank you, Simi. And lastly, for recognition this evening, it's our opportunity to highlight our mission moment, the Clean Water Calendar winners for 2024. Students at Barnard, Costello-Hamilton, and Leonard Elementary Schools showed their passion for protecting local freshwater sources through their participation in the annual Kids' Clean Water Calendar Contest sponsored by the Oakland County Water Resource Commission. This is part of the first unit in Michigan Studies that focuses on the Great Lakes ecosystem. These students have their artwork chosen from hundreds of entries throughout the county, excuse me, to be featured in the annual calendar. After a lesson in Michigan Studies class on the importance of protecting the Great Lakes watershed, students submitted their drawings for the 2024 calendar contest. There were nearly 600 entries in the county this year, and we are so proud to see so many of our students' drawings featured in the 2024 calendar. It's my pleasure at this time to ask the principals of the winners to come forward and acknowledge their students. So our grand prize winner from Leonard Elementary. Good evening.
Thank you so much, Board, for recognizing these amazing artists. From Leonard, I would like to recognize our fifth grader, Sally Huang.
Additional calendar winners from Costello, Dr. DePoneo.
I didn't do any artwork, but thanks for the applause. I would love to recognize Matthews Bahina. Matthews is a fifth grader at Costello, as well as.
Rishik. Rishik Paula and Nandini Sinha.
Congratulations. And I do hope that you guys take a look at the calendar.
Congratulations to our Costello winner. And from Barnard Elementary, Mrs. Bush.
Thank you for this recognition for our students. And I also just want to highlight and thank my fourth grade teachers that are also here that really promote this. So thank you to Mrs. Simon, Mrs. Kofar, and Mrs. Haynes that are also here. I'd like to recognize first Sam Ruth Singh. Emanuela Ivasai. And Erin Abraham. And then Mahit Arun. Congratulations, Barnard students. Congratulations, Barnard students.
And our final item of recognition, Dr. Recker from Hamilton.
Thank you, Board. From Hamilton Elementary School, we'd like to congratulate Zidane Akhtar, fifth grader in Ms. Zerwich's class.
Thank you, Dr. Recker, and thanks to all of our calendar award winners.
Okay, all right, so that's it for recognition. So we can take a five-minute recess. Okay, we are going to take a quick recess. This concludes all the recognition. If you'd like to stay and enjoy all the other business of the board, you're welcome to do that. But if you want to sneak out of here and enjoy the rest of your evening, you can do that as well. For all of our band folks, don't forget, we want to take your picture as a group out in the hall. Anything else I need to remind people of? I think that's it. All right, thank you for the folks who came for recognition. Thank you, folks. We move on with additions and deletions.
There are none this evening.
Thank you. And then we move to public communication on agenda items. We have three speakers tonight. Because of the number of speakers we have in total, each speaker will get two minutes tonight because we have -- do we still have 15 or have we gone to 16? We have 16 speakers, so each speaker will get two minutes.
All right. Okay, I'll try and do one minute and see if I can...
Hold on, we're going to fix our newfangled clock here.
And then I do up? Nope, doesn't do it. I can only do two one-minutes if you want.
Yeah, you want to do that?
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay, I'll let them know. Okay, so for public comment, you have two minutes. If you can state whether you have -- state your name and if you have any kids in the district. And then please just be civil. And again, the way this works is it's not a dialogue, it's an opportunity for you to voice concerns to the board. If you would like to have a response from the board or administration, let us know when you come up to the microphone, and we'll get back to you after the meeting. So my first person I have is Alex Karpowitz. Yeah, and Alex, we've got -- our newfangled clock is only set for one or three minutes. So we'll set it for one minute, and then we'll give you two one-minute things so you can watch, okay?
Two total?
Two total, yeah, because of the number of speakers tonight.
Good evening. My name is Alex Karpowitz. I'm a 38-year-old Troy resident and a 2004 Troy High graduate. During the middle school math and high school English curriculum discussion in May of last year, I corresponded with the Board of Education to identify what data the board had seen to support their decision to switch curriculum frameworks and eliminate honors courses. As a community member with no prior knowledge of the proposed change, having this information would provide necessary insight to answer a very basic question: How will the proposed curriculum change in elimination of honors courses impact student outcomes? So in a May 19 email, I wrote the board, "Troy School District has not shared M-step proficiency targets. The proposed curriculum overhaul and elimination of honors courses deserves a clear list of deliverables and M-step proficiency targets, with the board staking its tenure on achieving these deliverables. If Troy School District champions a tradition of excellence, this excellence deserves to be codified in clear goals and standards. While TSD has referenced illustrative mathematics adoption across peer school districts in Michigan, TSD has not shared data that benchmarks the proposed curriculum change and elimination of honors courses with peer school districts that have enacted similar policy. While Carl thanked me for the email, he did not answer any of the questions I posed. I made one last attempt on June 14 and requested for the board to name school districts that switched to illustrative mathematics and eliminated honors courses, to identify what impact this policy change would have on test scores and the number of eighth graders enrolled in Algebra I. Carl responded and suggested I file a FOIA. I followed up on this suggestion seven months later. Interestingly, the one board member that voted against the proposed curriculum change had a line of thinking similar to my own. On April 24, she asked for current M-step and P-SET scores across grade-level cohorts and course tracks. A few hours after this board member posed this question, Carl sent an email to Dr. Macheski. Oh, boy, it's Elizabeth 2.0. Can you or do you want me to ask Vital to re-post her request in terms of strategic questions or areas of concern, and then let your team provide pertinent data? Yet in all of the data that Troy School District has surfaced, it still cannot name a single school district that has done what Troy has done and how this has impacted test scores."
Listen, it's supposed to be of the Levinson Report? Yeah. Thank you. Our next speaker is Dr. Audra Melton. And just to clarify, these are supposed to be referencing the Levinson Report, is that correct? Okay.
Yeah.
I'm just confused by the first speaker. Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Board of Education. My name is Dr. Audra Melton. I'm a Troy resident, Athens graduate, TSD parent, and retired TSD administrator of International Kennedy East and Baker Middle School. What if I told you there were reading intervention programs that cost 50% to 60% less than our current model of reading recovery, that work even better for all kids, including those with reading challenges like dyslexia, produce lasting results over time, that could service four to five as many times students? Well, I reviewed Levinson's report that you'll review tonight. He offers five recommendations based on his analysis. The number-one recommendation is to expand the reach of elementary reading specialists to support more students who struggle. He cites What Works Clearinghouse as stating that groups of up to five students are as effective as one-on-one instruction. He supports models that allow for larger groups, allowing reading specialists to service more students each day. This is what he considers a positive academic return on investing, using interventions that have proven results that cost less and reach more students. In the spring 2024 edition of Education X Journal, Levinson actually calls out reading recovery by name as being an example of poor academic return on investment, and offers that other programs are just as, if not more effective, at a fraction of the cost. Interestingly enough, in the board presentation at the last workshop, administration showed a list of all five recommendations, but only chose two to elaborate and pursue further. They excluded the number-one recommendation to expand the reach of reading specialists. Why? Because this would mean eliminating reading recovery in favor of a different intervention. In conclusion, several years ago, Dr. Macheski told staff that sometimes we have to drop things that are good in order to move to great. Maybe it's time to step back from egos and personal interests to take a look at what is in the best interest of students to move from good to great.
Thank you. My next speaker is Stephanie Zendler.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Stephanie Zendler. I'm a Troy resident and a 13-year TSD parent. As you already know, I have a professional background in K-12 education and leadership, including 12 years tenure here in the TSD. I had an opportunity to review the new solutions K-12 Levinson Report that was presented to you as a board at the most recent workshop meeting. I was eager to hear the results of, as the report states as its purpose, "a systematic study to review the district's special education supports and services," on page two. In its entirety, I found the report frankly woefully lacking in methodology, structure, and actual data collection and analysis. In particular, for the targeted group of students, special ed students whose programming were being studied. I also found almost no information that stated any named special ed supports and services that were measured for database impact. How could the report's purpose be a systematic study to review special ed supports and services, again, page two, and not actually share or analyze any? Something else I saw that bears mention in the report on page six states that district leadership has demonstrated a deep understanding of the science of reading and implements these practices consistently and at scale. It's very confusing to me because as an example on page 12 of the report, it is suggested that the district often describes its reading program using language that is not aligned to widely accepted best practice. It goes on to say that the names Reading Recovery and Founess and Pennell are associated with practices that have fallen out of favor, connected to some less-than-best practices, and now connected to the controversy of reading instruction. The consideration on page 12 ends with this caution: This disconnect could cause eventual pushback from parents, teachers, and others. So renaming the district's reading program may be of interest. Continuing to use the balanced literacy programs of Lucy Cawkins, Reading Recovery, and Founess and Pennell, but renaming them to avoid parent and teacher scrutiny is not only a complete lack of transparency, but it is an outright untruth to our community. You shouldn't have to lie about programming if your programming is effective and aligned with best practice. The fact this author recommends such an approach raises concerns of his knowledge and integrity. Again, you can do better. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and then the general consent agenda is next. This consists of the minutes of the February 6, 2024 Board of Education Workshop, the minutes of the February 27, 2024 Board of Education Meeting, the Treasures Report from January of 2024, and retention pond budget modification. May I have a resolution, please, Mr. Hopp?
Be it therefore resolved that the Troy Board of Education takes action to approve items A, B, C, and D on the consent agenda.
Support. I have a resolution by Mr. Hopp, supported by Mr. Hopp. Do I have any questions or comments on this? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Thank you, resolution passes. Okay, at this point, we are going to take a 10-minute recess for our Muslim friends in the rooms who are ready to break fast for the day, and we will reconvene at 8 o'clock sharp. Okay, we're going to continue. We're going to continue with personnel. Mr. Pagel, I believe, will come up. Good evening, Mr. Pagel.
Good evening, Dr. Macheski, Mr. Schmidt, members of the board. I come to you this evening with two personnel recommendations for your consideration. The first one, under 6A, is for a middle school teaching position. It is recommended that the Board of Education approves the issuance of a probationary contract to the following teacher for the 2023-24 school year, and that teacher's name is Brian Witekup, and he's a math teacher at Smith Middle School.
Okay, thank you. We're being asked to consider the -- or to approve the hiring of a new middle school math teacher for Smith Middle School. May I have a resolution, please? Ms. Aliash?
Be it therefore resolved that the Board of Education takes action to approve the aforementioned personnel recommendations as stated above.
Support.
I have a resolution by Ms. Aliash, supportive of Ms. Anay. Are there any questions or comments about this? No? Nicole, you look like you...
I was going to ask when he starts, but I don't know that it matters. Did he start it already? Is he starting tomorrow?
He is in the building.
Okay, in the building. Okay, good. Okay, any other questions or comments? All seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed, say no. Thank you, resolution passes.
And under 6B this evening, I have a consideration of an administrative appointment for the position of Director of Athletics, Continuing Education, and Enrichment. I am very pleased to recommend the appointment of Mr. Matt Jansen to the position of Director of Athletics, Continuing Education, and Enrichment. Mr. Jansen has an extensive 26-year career in education. He began his career as an elementary teacher at WASD Elementary School. In 2011, Mr. Jansen became principal at WASD. During his career, he led his team at WASD to achieve and become a national blue ribbon school and a national school of character. Mr. Jansen has done an exceptional job, leading continuous improvement initiatives, implementing a culture of thinking, and leading character education during his time at WASD Elementary School. Mr. Jansen also has an extensive experience in coaching varsity boys and girls' basketball at multiple area school districts. Mr. Jansen has a Bachelor of Science degree in education from Saginaw Valley State University and a Master of Education degree in educational leadership from Saginaw Valley State University. With your approval, Mr. Jansen will begin his duties as Director of Athletics, Continuing Education, and Enrichment as of July 1, 2024.
Thank you. We're being asked to approve the appointment of a new Director of Athletics, Continuing Education, and Enrichment. May I have a resolution, please? Mr. Hopp?
Be it therefore resolved that the Board of Education issues a two-year probationary administrative contract without tenure in administrative position to Mr. Matt Jansen, who will begin his duties as Director, Athletics, Continuing Education, and Enrichment as of July 1, 2024.
Support.
Thank you. I have a resolution by Mr. Hopp, supported by Dr. Wilson. Are there any questions or comments about this character over here? Okay, good.
My wife was trying to get me to convince you all to vote no, just because we wanted Mr. Jansen as a principal for the next couple of years. My kids go to WASD, so I really wanted him to. But no, we are lucky to have him still in the Troy School District family, and I'm very, very happy for him.
So you have to deal with your wife now?
Yeah, I do.
All right, sure we're clear here about priorities. Okay, all right, good. Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Congratulations!
Mr. Jansen is here with his wife this evening?
Matt, you want to -- yes. Come say a few words to your adoring fans.
I am happy. So, Dr. Macheski, Board, thank you so much for this opportunity. Just a couple of things. I'm a lucky guy. I get a chance to be a lot of the teams, but the first team, Team Jansen, my beautiful wife Lisa is here this evening. I could not do my current job, or the job will be stepping into a new role of without her. I have the opportunity to thank here also the elementary principals that I have a chance to be on a team with, even former principals that are retired coming back tonight to show their support. Thank you for that. I want to thank Chris Griefport for her support. Since I've been in this role, sometimes I throw some crazy ideas at her, and she's always willing to listen and be supportive. But I also want to share two things. One, and that is, I am stepping into someone's shoes that is very difficult to fill. Tim Folcher is a man of integrity, work ethic, character, and he has raised the bar in athletics in this district, and I look forward to building upon the work that he's done. Tim, thank you very much for your work. And then one of the bittersweet parts of this is that, you know, for 26 years, I've served the WASD community, 13 as a teacher, 13 as principal, and Matt, thank you for voting yes. And going through this tonight, the WASD PTO Board, WASD parents, and a group of people that I have grown to love are here in support, and they're wearing their Team 45 shirts. Team 45, I love you! And I look forward to the best thing that I know how to do is that everything we have done together to take those practices, strategies, principles, collaboration, and teamwork, and apply it to the role that I get a chance to have the privilege to roll into in July. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Should I give a minute for a quick exit for people, or do you think... They know, okay, all right. Okay, great. Next on the agenda is curriculum.
There's none this evening.
Thank you, and that brings us to business with Mr. West.
Thank you. Always fun following Mr. Jansen.
Where's your fan club, Mr. West?
They're all you. We do have great business before the board, some to make sure that it continues to operate, and others to envision the future. So we are excited to bring forth these considerations for the board's approval tonight, the first one being the non-homestead millage renewal. This is a complicated matter of how schools are funded. However, it is that time. Back in November of 2018 and November of 2015, the voters approved what they call the homestead millage renewal and the non-homestead millage renewal. Tonight, I'm recommending that we combine those two and fund the school district for the next 20 years. Therefore, the resolution before you tonight does that. A little bit of the nuances about it, again, the current millage expires in 2025, December 31st of 2025. Therefore, you look at the election schedule from now until 2025, and we have really three -- four, May, I'm not going to count May, so really three opportunities to do so. One being November of '25, when there's municipality elections there, and that's very close to when the millage expires. The other one would be November of 2024, which is a loaded election, and then the other is the primary election in August. I'm recommending to the board that we go to the August 6, 2024 ballot to approve the non-homestead and homestead operating millages. In order to do that, a resolution is required by the Board of Education, and it is to be submitted to the Oakland County Election Division and Coordinator by May 14, 2024. Therefore, that's the reason it's coming to you. Therefore, that's the reason it's coming to you tonight, and I recommend the resolution be approved as stated below.
All right, thank you. We're being asked to consider a non-homestead renewal proposal here. Is there anyone well hydrated who's willing to read this? Dr. Philip Hart.
Whereas the board has determined that it is necessary for the continuing operation of the school district to renew the authority to levy certain operating mills as described in the operating millage renewal proposal attached here too as Exhibit A, called the proposal, and whereas it is necessary and desirable to submit the proposal to the school district's electors at an election to be held on August 6, 2024, the August election date, and whereas in order for the proposal to be submitted to the school district's electors on the August election date, it is necessary for the board to certify the proposal to the clerk of the county of Oakland, state of Michigan, the school district's election coordinator, as required by Michigan election laws, not later than 4:00 p.m. on May 14, 2024. Now, therefore, be it resolved that, number one, the proposal attached here too as Exhibit A is hereby certified to the school district election coordinator and the local clerks for submission to the school district's electors on the August election date. The secretary of the board and the superintendent are hereby each individually authorized and directed to file this resolution and/or to complete any such forms, certificates, or documents as may be required by the school district election coordinator and the local clerks to evidence the foregoing certification and/or submission by no later than 4:00 p.m. on May 14, 2024. Number two, the secretary of the board or the superintendent are further authorized prior to the submission of the proposal to the school district election coordinator to update the proposal to reflect any headly rollbacks applicable to the current operating millage for the 2024 year. Number three, the school district election coordinator is hereby authorized and directed to, A, post and publish notice of the last day of registration and notice of election for the August election date, and B, have prepared and printed ballots for submitting the proposal at the August election date, which ballots shall be in the form appearing in Exhibit A, or the proposition shall be stated as a proposal on the voting machines, which ballots may include other matters presented to the electorate on the same date. And number four, all resolutions and parts of resolutions, insofar as they conflict with the provisions of this resolution, be and the same hereby are rescinded.
Support.
Thank you. A resolution by Dr. Philip Hart, supported by Ms. Anay. Are there questions or concerns about this resolution? Ms. Anay?
Couple of questions. First, we are doing this now, so just to clarify, the tax rate will remain exactly the same as it is right now, but we're just extending the date.
That's correct, yes. We are, this is the non-homestead millage, which is the 18 mills levied on the businesses and non-homestead properties of the school district, and then the other levy is our operator, our hold harmless levy, which generates about seven, which is, generates $786 per pupil for us, and that's levied on all properties. So that extends, that's an annual calculation. The 18 mills will stay in place, and as you'll notice through the language, we are also hedging against future rollbacks, okay? So that's simply stating that the electorate's going to have a ballot initiative that states up to 22 mills. We can only levy 18 on the non-homestead properties. That allows us, through headly rollbacks in the future, to protect ourselves from going below that 18 mill. So through calculations, we think we forecast out, and we think that will last majority of those 20 years, so we'll continue to levy the full 18 mills. The same is true with our hold harmless levy. So we are currently levying 2.77 mills. The authorization is going to be for what? It's currently authorized up to 5.77, dependent upon student enrollment and property tax values that fluctuates on a year-to-year basis. So I think it's prudent and fiscally responsible to hedge against those rollbacks, as well as go out 20 years to create sustainability for the school district for years to come. This levies combined $2,637 on the non-homestead and $786 per pupil, so we're talking about $42 million of our operating budget as dependent upon this renewal.
One more question, since we are extending this. If we, right now, whatever it is, whatever taxes we have, they expire in 2025, does that start right after their election and go 20 years, or from 2025, 20 years?
From the election.
From the election date, 20 years. Okay.
And can you explain what the funds that we as a district generate through this, what those funds are used for?
Our operating budget, our general fund operating budget, so salaries, benefits, purchase services, supplies, maintenance, operations.
Okay.
Good. Any other questions?
So, you know, I want to thank you for putting this together and trying to extend it beyond, you know, what we've been doing in the past, because it would be really nice to stop having to go back to the electorate every couple of years for these. So these are, this is an ongoing thing. It's a, as you pointed out, it's a third of our operating budget, and 94% of that goes to salary and benefits. So it's, I really appreciate that you looked at this ahead of time and made a determination that we can figure out a way to do this less than every five or 10 years. It's really nice to do that for us. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Thank you. Resolution passes. This is laid out like I need to list the members, do I need to do a roll call? Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. 8B, consideration for asbestos abatement. ARFP was issued to obtain competitive bids for asbestos abatement work at Waddles Elementary School. Bid responses were reviewed by Rob Carson, Director of Operations, and Nova Environmental, Inc., and it is recommended the bid be awarded as stated below. As presented in our board workshop earlier this month, this is to go along with the flooring project that is taking place at Waddles. Any other projects that have asbestos or require to abate it, therefore, it's really a project-by-project basis in which we bring these recommendations forward, so we are happy to bring this forward to abate the asbestos at Waddles Elementary for us to proceed with the flooring.
All right, thank you. So we're being asked to support a bid for asbestos abatement, my favorite way of spending our money, and I don't think we'll ever run out of asbestos in this particular district. Ms. Aliish, would you like to read the resolution?
Be it therefore resolved that the bid for asbestos abatement be awarded to Midwest Environmental in the amount of $36,500, and that this amount be approved as an expenditure of the building and site, of the building and site sinking fund.
Support.
A resolution by Ms. Aliish, supported by Mr. Hoff. Are there any questions or comments on this? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Thank you. Resolution passes. 8C.
It may not seem exciting, but this is probably one of the most exciting things we'll do in the next decade, and it is the new Smith Middle School Foundation and Steel, so we're ready to roll here. ARFP was issued to solicit bids for Smith Middle School Foundations and Steel. The bids were reviewed by Barton Mallow Builders and TNP Architecture. It's recommended the contract be awarded as stated below. As I said, this will start the project. This will start the building. We plan on doing that in June. We plan on having a groundbreaking ceremony sometime in May, so we are excited. We've got it oriented. This is months and months of collaborative work that's come together, and we're finally at this stage where we are approving the project, so the foundations of the project. So we are thrilled to bring this recommendation forward, and it's been a labor of love.
Okay, we're being asked to support a resolution to purchase steel and a foundation for our new middle school over at Smith. May I have a resolution, please? Ms. Anay?
Be therefore resolved that the contract for Smith Middle School Foundation and Steel be awarded as follows, and that this amount be approved as an expenditure of the 2023 Capital Projects Fund Foundation. Simone Construction Services for $3,032,100. Structural Steel to B&amp;A Structural Steel LLC for $4,838,848. Site Demolition and SESC Blaze Contracting, Inc. for $587,000 for a bid total of $8,457,948 with a contingency of $676,635 for a total of $9,134,583.10.
Support.
Where's the 10 cents come from?
Thank goodness we got the 10 cents, okay. Good. Mr. Hoff, did you support that? Okay, thank you. I have a resolution by Ms. Anay, supported by Mr. Hoff. Are there questions or comments?
The 10 cents doesn't make sense.
Oh, yeah, it's a mistake. It's a mistake, yes, okay. So that should be-
Zero, zero.
Zero, zero. We'll forego the 10 cents. Okay.
That's going to make or break the product.
It's not going to make or break. I'll kick in the 10 cents if we have to. Okay. Good, thank you. And I was curious on this for the contingency. It's, as a percentage, it's not that high, but is that primarily based on what we may find as we're working the ground, or where is that? Because I know there's going to be foundational work there.
There's foundational work. There's additional, you know, we did the soil boarding, so we kind of know what we're working with right now, so it's-
But if the overruns, that's where the overruns will probably be, if we have to put more caissons down or something like that?
That's it.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Thank you. Hey, we're starting a new middle school. That's exciting.
Yes, indeed. Now we're going to put a fence around it. Well, the RFP was issued to obtain competitive bids for temporary fencing installations. As Smith Middle School bid responses were reviewed by Rob Carson, Director of Operations, it's recommended the bid be awarded as stated below. Nothing, nothing more than putting a fence around our construction zone for safety purposes here.
Okay, we're being asked to consider a resolution to put fencing around our new middle school foundation. May I have a resolution, please? Mr. Hoff?
Be it therefore resolved that the bid for temporary fencing be awarded to Fence Connection in the amount of $51,036, and that this amount be approved as an expenditure of the 2023 Capital Projects Fund.
Thank you. A resolution by Mr. Hoff, supported by Ms. Aliish. Any questions or comments on this? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. All right, thank you. We put a fence around it.
Thank you. 8E is a unique recommendation. The fiber infrastructure inside each of our buildings is aging and in need of replacement. An E-rate RFP was issued to obtain competitive bids. Pricing was reviewed by Troy Wisink, Director of Technology. It's recommended the bid be awarded as stated below. Just to give a little bit of context to this, we interviewed Troy Wisink on the day that the car hit the pole on Waddles Elementary, so we had a natural conversation with, what would you do? And by God, he had a recommendation, and, you know, three months on the job, he's executing it. So what this is going to do is it's going to create redundancy and reliability in our network in order to stay up and running with secondary internet connectivity. So what we're doing here is replacing the fiber in our buildings as well as adding a Layer 3, this is technology jargon, so don't ask me anything about it, but Layer 3 switch and a 5G router and accessories, and that creates the reliability and the redundancy. If we have a fiber break outside of our building, we now have a wireless connectivity to make us more reliable and maintain the essentials. It won't be as, as good as our fiber connection, but it will keep us up and running until we can get that, that repair made. So we are excited to bring this. The other thing is, this is an E-rate funded project, which means we are submitting it to the federal government for 40% reimbursement, so albeit it's $700,000 plus dollars or closer to $800,000, we anticipate a 40% refund from the federal government, bringing our costs for the project down.
Great, thank you. Thank you for that background on that. We're being asked to consider the purchase of a cellular WAN? WAN or WAN?
You say WAN, I say-
What's my expert? WAN. I was going to say, I could check, right next to me. Okay. Cellular WAN? May I have a resolution, please? Dr. Philip Hart?
Be it therefore resolved that the purchase of the Cisco switches, the 40 extender router, and accessories be awarded to People Driven Technologies in the amount of $790,132.15, and that this amount be approved as an expenditure of the 2023 Capital Projects Fund.
Thank you. A resolution by Dr. Philip Hart, supported by Mr. Hoff. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Thank you. Resolution passes. 8F.
And besides the middle school foundations, I believe this is the next most exciting recommendation before you, furniture purchase. So as we know, the Smith Middle School, the athletic complexes, furniture, and playgrounds were the start of our bond program. We have gone through year-long pilot program, and we would like to thank and acknowledge the 28 pilot teachers that's engaged in this process, who really tested the furniture, who was able to provide quality feedback to get us to the recommendation that we're making tonight, along with the leadership of Marie Woodman. She's been instrumental on both playgrounds and furniture, really, and she's done an excellent job leading and steering and shepherding that project in process, along with Christine and Chris, of course. So this is, this is the overall furniture package for the first six elementaries, as well as IA East and Baker Middle School. So Christine DiPlato, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Instruction, Chris Greifer, Assistant Superintendent of Elementary Education, led a project team with TNP Architecture, building administrators and staff to evaluate the use and needs for furniture in the elementaries, Baker Middle School, and IA East. It's recommended the furniture purchase be approved as stated below.
Thank you. We're being asked to consider the purchase of furniture for elementaries and several middle, middle school and one of our high schools. May I have a resolution, please? Ms. Aliish?
Be it therefore resolved that the furniture purchase for Costello, Hamilton, Leonard, Schroeder, WASD, and Waddles Elementary Schools, along with Baker Middle School and IA East, for an amount not to exceed $4,828,873.17, through pre-existing bid contracts, or as outlined in the memo from TNP dated March 15, 2024, be approved as an expenditure of the 2023 bond fund.
Support.
Thank you. A resolution by Ms. Aliish, supported by Dr. Wilson. Are there questions or comments about this? Go ahead.
So, so these schools will get furniture this year, the other remaining will get it next year, and, correct?
Yes, and then the playgrounds, the six elementaries that aren't getting furniture are getting playgrounds, and vice versa for next year.
Good. Any other questions?
I just would, I want to call it again to Ms. Woodman, because when we toured at the beginning of the year, I've just been, and not just Ms. Woodman, but I know that she's been in charge, doing a lot of legwork on it, but the team that did this was so thoughtful, and, and as we went in, they were able to talk about how the furniture is going to reinforce the type of learning we're trying to move to. So it was really exciting for us as we saw that, and I think that makes this purchase really exciting, because I feel like in so many ways, the old furniture holds back our teachers sometimes in terms of what they want to do in the classroom. So this is really exciting. It provides a more agile environment for our teachers and kids. So just want to shout out to the team that did all the work on this, and for the 28 teachers that volunteered to do this. And again, it was fun talking to the teachers, because they were letting their students rearrange the room occasionally, so watch it, and then we were able to interview the students about, what did you like about this? Why did you rearrange the room the way you did? And it was very exciting to see the students be able to take agency in that and be able to explain why the particular arrangement they arrived at was more conducive to their learning. So all in all, I mean, we walked out of there in the fall, going, can't wait to do the final purchase, so it's fun to kind of be doing that. So just want to share that with a shout out.
Good. Any other comments, any of the long-winded comments? Okay. All those in favor, please say yes. Yes, opposed, say no. All right, thank you. We have new furniture.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. West. All right, I'm going to do one shift here. The next item of the agenda is public communication, but I'm going to shift and do our student reports first, and then, just because we'll be at least a half hour with public comment, so if any of our students want to leave or need to leave, once they do the report, you're free to do that. You can step out whenever you can. So Narita, would you like to start?
Of course.
Tell us about IA East.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you are all having a tremendous Tuesday. This month has been a roller coaster of fun events at IA East. Last Wednesday was a big day for our sophomores, as they had their personal project exhibition. The personal project is an important culminating event of the IB Middle Years Program. It allows students to apply their skills to a topic they are passionate about and share it with the community. Some of the amazing projects I saw during the exhibition were a student who had chickens at home with an incubator, and a student who learned how to dunk a basketball on a 10-foot rim. On March 7, the IA East Orchestra went to the TSD preschool and spent time with what one student described as the cutest learners they have ever met. Our musicians hosted an instrument petting zoo, where the preschoolers got to touch and even play some of the instruments. The event ended with performances of some extremely popular and intricate musical compositions, "Bluey," "Peppa Pig" and "Let It Go" from Frozen. These songs brought smiles to everyone's faces, and music teacher Ms. Nicole Mays is looking forward to doing the concert again next year. Another big event we had was the Shamrock Showdown on March 8. This was a Special Olympics basketball tournament, spearheaded by three exceptional teachers who have been working tirelessly to plan it since the beginning of February. These teachers are Ms. Bryn Lawrence and Ms. Lindsay Du Fresni from the Troy Center for Transition, and Mr. Mark Shinowski, who we call Mr. C. from IA East. Mr. C. gave his sophomores the opportunity to organize the basketball tournament, as it fits perfectly with the core themes of his Adventure Challenge class. Our sophomores spent hours making special decorations for the event, such as banners for the team to run through, and a customized jersey poster for each player to take home. During the event, our sophomores even took on the roles of announcers, cheerleaders, and halftime coordinators, to turn our gymnasium into a welcoming and encouraging environment for the players. The halftime show featured everyone filling the gym to do the Cupid Shuffle, and the largest game of Simon Says I Think We Have Ever Had at IA East. Everyone were agreeing to support the players, who were absolutely overjoyed to have so many people cheering for them. I have never been to a sporting event where everyone was a fan for everyone, and where the environment was so incredibly supportive. Mr. C.'s goal is to make the Special Olympics basketball tournament bigger and better each year as a new tradition, and we cannot wait to see where it goes from here. And that is all I have with IA East news. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jayla Turner, would you like to tell us what's going on at Troy?
Absolutely, good evening. I'm so excited to share some updates from Troy High that highlight the recent activities and achievements. Firstly, we had the pleasure of hosting 50 senior citizens from across, for a special viewing of Footloose, accompanied by lunch prepared by our leadership students. It was a great opportunity for some community engagement, and it was one of our favorite events that we host. And following this event, we will be hosting our senior citizens' annual prom in mid-April. Additionally, this past weekend, our annual middle school leadership conference was a success, with around 107th and 8th graders attending to learn about our school and prepare for the transition to high school. This past weekend as well, Troy High had 129 students compete at DECA State in Detroit, with around 4,000 students. 52 Troy High students qualified for the international competition that'll be hosted in California at the end of April, so congratulations to them and best of luck. In sports news, our Cedar and I swim team won the state championship, demonstrating dedication and skill from our athletes. Tomorrow, we will have some of our student athletes travel to the elementaries across the district to be mystery readers in the K-5 classrooms. Looking ahead, our teams are gearing up for spring sports, and we're excited to see them in action. We also have been enjoying a fun split week before spring break, and a visit from our favorite donut truck added a sweet touch to our day on Friday. Overall, it's been a great month over at Troy High, and I think that's it from our side of Rochester. Thank you.
Thank you, Jayla. And then, we have a special guest star tonight filling in for, for Athens, Ms. Mackenzie Sawyers.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mackenzie Sawyers, like you said. Last weekend, the Athens Cedar Company premiered their spring play, "The Play That Goes Wrong", which I can attest lived up to its name. In the music department, all three Athens bands secured First Division honors at the MSBO Festival. Additionally, the Winter Guard put on a showcase for the community. Tryouts took place last week, and spring sports are now in full swing, with women's soccer playing their first game this Thursday. In the realm of STEM, Athens Robotics went to a competition in Ann Arbor and proudly received the Engineering Inspiration Award. The Science Olympia team placed second at regionals, and Athens Girls Who Code joined first forces with the Society of Women Engineers at the University of Michigan for International Women's Day. The Hawk Nest is ready to wind down for spring's break and after a full month of action. Before I wrap up this evening, I would like to personally touch on the current project that the TSD Student Equity Council has been working on to implement into the district. In celebration of March being reading month, we are acting by having the council representatives make change in TSD classrooms and elementary libraries by purchasing and sharing a Representation Matters book collection with series geared toward their age groups. This initiative was introduced to TSD administrators, who sat in on the Student Equity Council meet and greet, along with Mrs. DiPilato, last month, where members of the council delved into their mission and future plans for the district. This council is built of students from Athens, Troy High, IA East and TCCHS, who are focused on making our district where everyone belongs and overall, a better place to be. This is just the beginning of big things that the community will see from the council. We thank our cabinet, administrators, teachers and students for their support, and we look forward to working with everyone in the coming weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mackenzie. So that, and again, folks, if you need to cut out, just, you can just quietly cut out, no particular order. Okay. Are the, okay.
The others.
Oh, okay.
Agenda items are out, so.
Okay, so we have 15, 16 speakers, ish, I believe? Yeah, 17, we're up to.
14, I think, because we took.
Oh, 'cause we took the other one out, okay. So we're, so we have about 15 speakers, again, two minutes each. If you could indicate whether you have any kids in the district, and then we're, have you been able to reprogram?
Two, one minute now.
Okay, so we're gonna give you two, one-minute rounds on the, on the little timer there. And then, other than that, just, if you could be polite, that would be great. And my first person I have here is Mr. Peter.
Dudgeon.
Dudgeon. Mr. Peter Dudgeon?
Good evening. Good evening, school board members. My name is Peter Dudgeon, I am a lifelong resident of the city of Troy, I have a daughter at Troy High School. Recently, my daughter brought to the attention, to the staff at Troy High about a male student that has been using the female bathroom in the high school, and that made her very concerned and uneasy, so when she brought that attention to the staff at Troy High, they basically stood behind the Title IX Civil Rights Sex Discrimination Federal Law, which I understand the basis for that law. Nobody is questioning the student's choice of identity. What the concern is, is the safety of the female students in the bathroom, as well as the male students. The basis for this student's reasoning to use the female bathroom is because they feel uncomfortable using the male bathroom. I understand that you have not made a rule or a position on bathroom usage. Michigan does not have bathroom usage or gender laws as it applies to bathroom usage. However, you kind of have made a decision by telling my daughter, if she felt uncomfortable with that situation, she could use a single-stall bathroom. I would think that the district, along with your legal counsel, could come up with some type of, call it rule or best practice, that would satisfy both sides of the aisle, giving that student some privacy and respecting their concerns, as well as the other students who may feel uncomfortable and maybe even threatened, but not brave enough to come forward and say something. My daughter did, and since that has happened, she's been kind of singled out to feel like she's the one with the problem, because she's not accepting of the student. She's known the student since middle school, or, I'm sorry, since grade school. We have no problem with this student, their choices, their family choices, we also know the family members. The concern is the safety in the school, and we feel that would be the board's best interest to identify this issue and come up with a solution. Is that my full two minutes?
Was that full two? Okay, thank you. Mrs. Katie McFarland? Mrs. Katie McFarland?
Good evening. Hi, I'm Katie McFarland, I'm a parent in the district. I'm here to show support for Peter's daughter and their family. As a teenage girl, should not have ever been made to feel uncomfortable or unsafe in the bathroom at school. This is a safety and privacy issue for all students. Dr. Macheski, you stated in an email to me that the safety and security of all students is your top priority. Prove it by immediately enacting a common sense policy that forbids anyone from entering the private spaces of the opposite biological sex, and any kid who identifies a certain way that does not feel comfortable in a male or female bathroom, utilize a staff or a single-stall restroom. Anyone who purposely violates this and enters the bathroom or locker room of the opposite sex needs to be held, needs to be suspended or expelled from school, and use the bond money to invest in more single-stall restrooms. If you truly consider yourself to be a district of character, stop trying to hide, hide behind Title IX, and actually enforce your anti-bullying policies by implementing these common sense solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Michelle Fox Phillips? Oh. She left, okay, she was.
Good evening.
Thank you for listening to me. Thank you for having me here. My name is Michelle Fox Phillips, I'm from the Gender Identity Network Alliance. I am here to support the high school, and I am here to support the school board in their decision to back up the trans student that used the bathroom or locker rooms of their identity. There has been too many bullying of trans students just a couple weeks ago, because of the, what's going on in Oklahoma. Tr- Max Benedict committed suicide for being bullying. As for doing a one-stall or single-stall, you are outing that student as being transgender, and that is puts them in danger. Also, thank you again, once again, just to let you know that trans students have a hard time using other restrooms. A lot of them, they won't hold themselves for the whole day, they won't drink water or any liquid, and they will wait until they leave school to use a restroom at home or on the way home, whatever, because of fear. Bullying is rampant towards trans and non-binary students. It's rampant all over the country. We are the target of individuals, they have passed, don't gay, don't say gay bills, they are trying to erase our identity, and the students are at risk. Once again, I'd like to say thank you for the support of this trans student.
Thank you. Mr. Jake, Mr. Jason Chikowitz? Jason? Jason Chikowitz, that's correct, you're right. I called Jason?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, they're not any. They're, they're just stacked up here, yeah, so. Sorry. Hi.
Hi. Good evening, my name is Jason Chikowitz, and I'm the proud president of the Troy Education Association. Once again, I am here to discuss the teacher contract that expired on Wednesday, January 31, 2024. Your Troy teachers have been working without a contract for 48 days. Several inaccurate misleading remarks were made at the conclusion of the last school board meeting by the TSD Board of Education. While there are certainly two sides to every story, I want to make one thing abundantly clear. The Troy Education Association will not engage in sharing specific details about bargaining in a public forum.
Hold on, hold on. Honestly, I didn't turn the light off.
I won't take it personally.
Sorry, go ahead, Jason.
We believe this practice will only hinder the parties as they work towards reaching a success or agreement. Having said that, I stand before you today to address a critical issue facing the Troy School District, the recruitment and retention of talented Troy teachers. The Troy School District often boasts about being world-class. The truth of the matter is your talented Troy teachers are the essential ingredient in helping Troy reach this milestone. For this trend to continue, Troy needs to do everything imaginable to recruit and retain the best teachers. After all, a good teacher can inspire hope, ignite the imagination and instill a love of learning. That is why I am disappointed to report that the Troy School District's current ability to recruit and retain talented teachers has fallen behind the competition, including many districts located right here in Oakland County. So far, Troy has chosen not to address this teacher recruitment and retention dilemma, with the historic income received from the state of Michigan and the funds it has amassed in its savings account, which is the second highest in Oakland County. Unfortunately, the net result of this decision is that both new and seasoned teachers are choosing not to pursue careers in the Troy School District. This is a critical moment for the Troy School District. To keep Troy on the right path, teacher recruitment and retention should be given a top priority above all other initiatives. All Troy students deserve a world-class education, and a world-class education starts with having a talented Troy teacher in each of our classrooms.
Okay, thank you.
Let's work together to make this happen.
All right, thank you. Ms. Justine Galbreth? Ms. Justine Galbreth?
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Justine Galbreth, I'm a teacher in the district and the mother of two Troy students, a son at Smith and a daughter at Troy High. I'm here this evening to thank the board and the administration for upholding the rights of students by allowing all to access restrooms that correspond with their gender identity. Unfortunately, we are seeing in Troy the same pattern we see elsewhere in the country. Extreme right-wing organizations and news tell scary stories about school indoctrination or books for LGBTQ people, and the bigotry trickles down to the local level. It was only a matter of time before the existence of trans students in the district was noticed, pounced upon and shrieked about as the latest threat to our children. I'd like to point out first that trans students are our children, too. These kids have parents, and their rights matter as much as anyone else's. No parent's rights supersede anyone else's. Next, the issue of bathroom access is pure bigotry cloaked in the language of safety. The suggestion that trans students are predators is offensive and it's based in ignorance. A UCLA study found no evidence that letting trans people use bathrooms aligned with their identity increased any safety risks. A Harvard study found that trans and non-binary teens face a greater risk of assault in schools that prevent them from using bathrooms aligned with their identity. Requiring them to use other bathrooms isn't only discriminatory, but it would also make schools safe, less safe for them. So again, thank you. The current policy is in accordance with Michigan law, it poses no risk to cisgender students, and it is protective of students who are trans. It is so disappointing that in a district that prides itself on diversity, we have adults attacking students and demand that they use segregated bathrooms. It's disgraceful. Instead, we should focus on what we all agree on, that our students should attend schools where they are able to be their full selves, that they grow into young adults, they can be trusted to know who they are, and that they respect, that they deserve autonomy and respect. Again, the demand that trans students not be allowed to use bathrooms that align with their identity so that our girls can be safe is based in bigotry, not evidence, and I thank you for dismissing it.
Thank you. Yvonne Tatajewski? Yvonne Tatajewski? There you are. Good evening, did I say it right? Tatajewski?
Tatajewski.
Tatajewski, I like that, I'm sorry, I didn't say that right.
Well, you're, you're doing the American.
I know, that's why I like the way you said it better, so. Welcome.
Good evening, thank you for having me. I'm here from Pea Fly Clinton Township, I'm the president of the chapter, and I don't know if I should be proud or embarrassed to say we are the only chapter in McComb County, but it is what it is. I'm here to lend support to the parent of the transgender. Any of your transgender students deserve to be treated with respect, and I'm not gonna get into the bathroom issue and other things, but I just, you see I have a shirt that says "Al..." but I just, you see I have a shirt that says ally. I don't have LGBTQ. My child is not. But there have been some in the family. So I know what they have gone through. And I just give, give those kids all the love that you can because they deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Emily Freeman? Oh, give me a second. Ms. Emily Freeman?
Good evening.
Hello, I'm Emily Freeman and I've been a Troy teacher for 17 years. I've been here through the step freeze of the early 2010s, through working without a contract in 2013, 2020, and again in 2021. So I can tell you how it feels to work through yet another contracted negotiation this year. For a veteran like myself, it has become hard for the course. I can be patient because I've gotten a lot of practice at this point. But let me speak for the younger teachers. I remember what it was like to work without a contract back when I was in their position. And I never would have spoken up publicly about the anxiety that comes with it. The anxiety of not knowing whether I'd be able to afford my new mortgage, not knowing if it was the right time for another child, the anxiety of not knowing when we would settle, let alone what the outcome would mean for my family. Of course, uncertainty is just a part of life. But study after study has found that teachers already experience more stress, anxiety, and level of burnouts than other professions. Elementary teachers have to know seven different curricula at an expert level. We have to understand child development, curriculum design, second language acquisition, signs of trauma, best practices for instruction, differentiation, and intervention in literacy, numeracy, oral language, civics, the sciences, social emotional learning, and executive functioning, and be adept at public communication, and we have to do it all with a smile. Our young teachers especially are bending over backwards every day to prove to themselves and to you that they can do all these things better than any other group of teachers you will find because we believe in being world-class. The very last thing those young teachers need is to add financial uncertainty to that very long list of concerns. Right now, it's March and that means it's hiring season. I'm here for the long haul. I can remain patient. But our talented, bright new teachers are working under a cloud of uncertainty, knowing full well that they could move just a few miles up the road and have more pay and more peace of mind. And I beg you not to take their patience for granted.
Kylie Wood? Kylie Wood? Kylie Wood?
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Kylie Wood and I'm a fifth grade teacher at Hill Elementary. Members of the school board, we come before you today not just as teachers, but as dedicated professionals who are deeply committed to the success and well-being of our students and schools. We stand here united, representing the countless hours of hard work, passion, and dedication that we pour into our classrooms each and every day. Our commitment to education extends beyond the classroom walls. It is a pact we've made with our students, their families, and the community. To fulfill this commitment, we must create an environment that values and supports the educators who contribute tirelessly to the intellectual and emotional development of our future generations. It is undeniable that our work is not just a job. It's a calling, a passion that drives us to empower the minds of the next generation. Yet despite our unwavering commitment, we find ourselves in a position where our efforts are not being duly recognized and compensated. We find ourselves in a position working without the security and stability of a contract. This uncertainty weighs heavily on our minds and hearts and casts a shadow on our profession. We are left feeling undervalued and uncertain about our future. We come to you with a message that resonates from the core of our possession, from our, the core of our profession, excuse me. It's time for action. We must insist on a contract that acknowledges the invaluable contributions we make to our schools, our communities, and society. A fair and equitable contract is not just about financial compensation. It is a reflection of the respect and value placed upon the hard work, dedication, and expertise that each one of us brings to the table. It is an investment in the quality of education we provide and an assurance that our profession is esteemed and secure. We urge you, the members of the school board, to consider the vital role that teachers play in the success of our schools and our students. We urge you to consider the profound impact that a fair and equitable contract has on the morale, motivation, and overall effectiveness of the teaching staff. Finally, we urge you to work with us in good faith to negotiate a contract that reflects our dedication and commitment to excellence.
Thank you, Ms. Freeman. Jennifer Smith?
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Jennifer Smith, Bolin teacher. Thank you for your time. I'm speaking on behalf of a non-tenured teacher who crafted this speech. We've been losing patience with the district's expired deadline on a fair and equitable contract for teachers. Because of this, some of us are forced to seriously consider other options for our health and well-being, especially new teachers in their first five to seven years. From the perspective of a newer teacher myself, we share the mindset of prioritizing an outstanding educational experience for all Troy students. But how can a teacher be expected to bring world-class education to our students if we are not being cared for? How is the district planning to realistically reduce burnout in our new contract? Adequate contracted time to produce our high caliber of teaching is not provided for us. To be frank, if we only worked to typical contracted hours, the students of Troy logistically would not be receiving the world-class education that we promised them. I ask everyone in this room, by a show of hands, how many people know a Troy teacher working a second job? As a fifth-year full-time teacher in a single-income household, I am once again actively searching for a second job on the weekends to pay my bills. Every year I have taught, I've had to work a second job every weekend to survive, which takes time and capacity away from providing for my students. I am working all day and into the night, seven days a week, even now on an expired contract in order to give my kids the education they deserve and need. This is approximately 80 working hours a week. With this, I'm expected to survive on about $50,000 a year in my fifth year of teaching. Currently, I cannot afford to live a healthy lifestyle and teach to the best of my ability. Showing up as a teacher I want to be for my kids is proving to be very difficult because of the factors mentioned. I hope you plan to address the major concern of time and compensation, compensation for all teachers in our new contract.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Jennifer Taylor? Ms. Jennifer Taylor? Mrs. Jennifer Taylor? Sorry about that. I said miss. Mrs.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Jennifer Taylor and I've been teaching in Troy, our world-class district, for 38 years. All of my teaching years have proudly been at Bolin Park Middle School, where we pride ourself in a community of honesty, empathy, responsibility, and determination. Teaching has proven to take an extraordinary amount of patience. I've taught close to 5,000 students and have been through over a dozen contract negotiations. This feels like déjà vu. My students help keep me feeling young, grateful, and full of hope, while lengthy contract negotiations, over and over, proven to steal my patience, create undue stress, and make me feel undervalued. I know that I'm not alone when I wonder why a world-class school district with a fruitful fund equity has not figured out a way to prioritize and settle fair and equitable agreements prior to the expiration date of a CBA. The deadline has passed once again. It feels stressful and so unnecessary. Frankly, we're tired of these challenges and tired of being patient with this process. Teachers meet deadlines daily. We work tirelessly to meet the expectations of our profession, our leaders, and our community while delivering hundreds of required benchmarks in creative ways that prepare our students to live their best lives. We teach our students the importance of finishing the job on time. If we, the teachers, did not meet our goals and our deadlines, this district would not be world-class. Our patience needs to be focused on our students. I recently found myself reading an advertisement on social media written by the Troy School District to recruit new teachers to our world-class district. I could not help but question the fact that Troy teachers are currently working under an expired contract. We will have much better fortune in hiring and retaining the best teachers with an agreement that values the work we all do every day. Our contract has expired. The deadline has passed. Please act responsibly and prioritize a timely, equitable, world-class contract. Your teachers deserve it.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Ms. Audrey Kara? Ms. Audrey Kara?
Hi. Good evening. My name is Audrey Kara. I'm a first-year fifth-grade teacher at Hamilton Elementary School. Since I was younger, I had a love and appreciation for the education system. As I got older and I chose this path as my livelihood, I had a lot of backlash. Family members and my own teachers told me not to go into the field because it's not worth it. I didn't listen because I love kids and I love the profession. There is nothing that can take that love away from me. As a first-year teacher, I'm learning and navigating the ins and outs of balancing work and home life. From a young age, I've used, I'm used to working two to three jobs because I've been financially independent for longer than most of my peers. This year is no exception, but balancing two jobs has never been harder. I am now a full-time teacher with $30,000 in student loan debt that continues to grow as I continue my passion of continuous learning to get my master's degree. Because I, while I worked to survive, I did not have a chance to work to pay off school. So between a multitude of finances that I have and the needs to think about my financial future, my teacher salary needs to be supplemented to keep me afloat. My students think it's funny that I'm the teacher that works at Little Caesar's, but it's the truth. I spend my weekends not only making pizzas, but also mentally working through what my work week will look like. As I roll dough balls, I'm listening to podcasts or lectures to help me navigate my first year of teaching. When I'm answering phone calls or organizing spaces, I'm looking ahead at my curriculum. Teaching is a monster of a profession that takes up all my mental space, but I still love it. My roommate graduated at the same time as I did and headed into her own passion of a career in engineering. We leave at the same time every day and arrive home sometimes at the same time every day. Obviously, these are two different professions, but she's amazed by the fact that I work throughout the day and still have so much more to do at night. This is not something I'm not used to and I'm sure with time it'll get easier. But the fact of the matter is there is not enough time in the school day to take care of my own students' needs, parent emails, differentiation of student learning, and just plain teaching to truly finish everything I need and prepare for tomorrow by 4:13 every day. I want to end by saying, teaching in Troy is everything to me. I love the culture and the passion for learning. I appreciate the administration and the professional colleagues that I am surrounded by every day. The day I got called to be a teacher here, I was also called by another school district that could have offered me more money, but I wanted Troy and I believed in Troy. So for not only the struggling new teachers like me, but for your dedicated staff that love and believe in you and who deserve more for the amazing work they do, I say that we deserve a fair and equitable contract. We deserve to be treated like we are appreciated and wanted. We deserve to say we are proud to teach in Troy.
Thank you. Mr. Ali Apahidian?
Good evening. Good evening, Ali Apahidian, Troy parent, Troy resident. The drama in our district seems to be never-ending. That unfortunate reality is that this drama comes to, comes at an expense to students and families in this district. Am I shocked that the district is allowing a boy to use a girl's restroom? Yes, I'm shocked, but am I surprised? I'm surprised also. But I'm not as surprised as I really should be. Our district has a track record over the last three or four years of making other things a priority over the well-being and safety of all students. This is the same administration who endorses and promotes pornographic material in our social and our school media centers that condone the sexual assault of girls and pedophilia. This is the same administration who just a few years ago brought in the Troy police to arrest the parents who brought their first grader to school without a mask. This is the same administration who refused to suspend a male student for exposing his genitals to two girls in middle school. And instead of actually suspending him, they actually suspended the two girls who, they got punished by being sent to the principal's office. This is the same administration who allowed Mr. Carl Schmidt, right here, the president of this board, just a few months ago, to actually show a video in the classroom that mocked parents who have the courage to speak out against discriminating and racist D E I policies being pushed in our classrooms every day. It has, this district actually has some transitioning of itself that it's been doing over the past few years. It has transitioned from focusing on education to prioritizing and pushing all sorts of propaganda and ideologies that are evil and destructive. When will this administration care about the mental and physical well-being of girls who are born girls at least as much as they care about the boys who pretend to be girls? If this administration is okay with giving equal rights to anyone who claims to be whatever they want to be, I wonder if they would be okay with any parent in the audience right here to actually identify as a board member and pull up a chair right here next to you. I'm sure you wouldn't agree with that.
Thank you.
That would be ridiculous.
Thank you.
It's time you stop using Title IX as an excuse to allow boys in girls' bathrooms.
Thank you. Chris Kuss? Chris Kuss?
Chris?
Chris? Chris Kuss? Good evening.
Hi, I'm Chris Kuss, two kids from Troy. I'd like to speak today on the ongoing safety issues in Troy schools. We're today from the father of girls' confrontation with a male and female's bathroom and the girl getting bullied online for wanting safety, probably by people even in this room from out of town. We've seen in Loudoun County, this lack of safety led to $30 million lawsuit due to sexual assault and a lack of response from the school. I've heard from Dr. Macheski's current response is just to wait there until harm is done and punish accordingly, nothing being proactive. Safety for our girls should be, have a very high importance. Many girls having uncomfortable and unsafe situations will just stop using the restroom until they are somewhere safe. That's a pretty sad state of affairs. And that's what we, students, have to expect at Troy schools right now. And on the topic of removing honors math from sixth grade, a little bit of a pivot. We now know way fewer kids are getting into advanced math due to being told your fifth grader needs to be also learning sixth grade math simultaneously by April, which is basically next month. This clearly is not thought through. By the school board's own admittance, there won't be enough classes for classes like engineering, physics. This cannot be an issue we ignore in a city so focused on academics. This is not going away and we need to continue fighting to get these classes back together. Thank you.
Thank you. Saul Juan Roban? Saul Juan Roban? Saul Juan Roban?
Good evening.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for having this meeting. And the topic that I want to, that I want to talk about today is the female student bathroom being attacked by the male transgender. Can we have nice, like a... The original fundamentals that built this nation the way it is today and the way how it was in the 50s, 60s, 70s. The more we travel in time, the less we experience this freedom. I respect all transgenders and I respect transsexual, transgender, whatever you want to call it, homosexuals, all kinds of, their choice to do that. I've never offended any one of them. I've never done any harm to them. And I hope that people don't, you know, point the fingers and say, "This is not the correct time, ma'am."
I know. I'll give you one more minute.
Appreciate it, yeah. And I, you know, appreciate this opportunity that we just want to maintain what we have, just like any family that want to maintain the safety of their transgender, the student, kids. We also want to maintain that as well. When I first came to this country in 1997, there was a, a lot of quotes written on the board. One of them was, "If you want respect, be the first one to show it." From what I've noticed, there's a lot of tactics that have been used to push somebody, not jump to the edge. Whereas when they start defending themselves, they get called all different kind of names. This happened in, excuse me, 1946 in China. This happened in 1923 in Germany. And it's happening as we see right now. God bless America. God bless the First Amendment so we can speak. God bless America, God bless the First Amendment, so we can speak and discuss our issues civilly and not make a threat and say, "We're going to write it down." Is that American? You want to write it? What does that mean? Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes, we don't have anymore, right? That concludes our public communication. That takes us to other, and first under other, do you want?
Want to start with everyone else and then go, or you want me to go? I can go first.
Why don't you?
I'll go first?
Okay, go first. Yeah. Clint's going to pull that up. Thanks, Clint. Oh, there we go. Okay. So the board had an opportunity to see at the last workshop, to hear at the last workshop, the summary that was put together by Mr. Levinson referenced earlier today by several members, or at least two members of the community. I want to just share with the-- Do you know what? For my TA members that are leaving right now, could you stay? We'll rearrange. I want to show you something that we worked, that Dr. Macheski and I spent a day working on Friday. I was hoping you'd stay until we got to that, but I'm afraid you're leaving, so I want to be able to share that. Can we cue?
You want to do this first? That's fine.
I think--
Yeah, no, that's fine. I'm flexible.
I'm just going to do a couple of charts. Can you? Okay. Thank you. I mentioned to the board earlier, but on Friday, Rich and I traveled to Lansing to meet with the state senate appropriations chair. She actually gave us, and we were there with David Randalls from Oakland Schools, and the reason that we went there is because when we saw Governor Whitmer's proposed budget, we were really upset. I was particularly upset, incensed even, that the increase for K-12 was 2.5% in a year where inflation was about 3.3%. This slide that you're looking right here is a slide that I have shoved in every politician's face who will give me two minutes to demonstrate that if you look at, even last year when the governor was proclaiming record increases in public school funding, she didn't meet the rate of inflation. If you look at the actual, if you look at the bars on this graph, this is showing our per pupil allowance since 2004. But if you, and so you might look at that and say, "Oh, we're improving right here." But if you look at the red line up above, the red line up above is if you correct for inflation. If you, when you correct for inflation, the districts in the state of Michigan are currently operating at 60% of the funding we received in 2004. So when outside forces say, "Tighten your belts," I point out that, you know, we've cut our organs in half at this point trying to tighten our belts to get there, and it's extremely frustrating for us because we want to be able to support the level of income for our people that provides a good career and good potential for advancement. If you look at our budget, you will see that 67% of our funds go to direct instruction and 94% of the funds in our general fund go to salary and benefits. So if we can increase the dollar amounts coming into our school, we have money to turn around. 94% of that money goes into the pockets of our employees. That's what we want to be able to do. So we sat down with her and actually got 45 minutes, and we walked her through this and said, "We can't accept the governor's proposal. We need to fund public education at a rate that's higher than the rate of inflation because we need to start closing this gap." The other thing that we talked about is in the governor's proposed budget for 2025, she has, the funding that relates to MIPSers and medical insurance for retirees, has finally gone from a deficit to it's actually meeting the goals. And that could free up $670 million to put into general funding for, back into schools. $670 million. For us, we're talking in order of, it's about $9 million, I think that would go back into our coffers to be able to pay back out to our staff. The problem is that Governor Whitmer is suggesting that the entire $670 million go straight to preschool only, to universal preschool. So we came in and presented our journey building our preschool, and we talked about and pointed out that, you know, we're doing extremely well with our preschool penetration right now. We've been able to knock down the number of kids by half that were not getting a quality preschool. But our argument to her is that you can't fund preschool on the back of K-12. You can't look at K-12 and say, "Well, I'm going to underfund that one more time in order to do that." So we pointed out that the better strategy is to set up a gradual increase of pre-K, but start thinking about, stop talking about K-12, talk about pre-K-12, because we have to think about that entire range for our kids. Put the money into the general coffers of the school districts and then set a goal as to how many people you're going to, how many, what the proportion is of students that you want to get preschool each year, and you can work that all the way up to universal if you want to in five years or six years. But we pointed out, in our case, from the time we said, "We have this problem, we're going to try to close this gap in preschool," it's taken us really five to six years in order to get there. So it's unrealistic to throw the money at everybody earmarket only for pre-K and say, "You got to start spending that right now across the board on pre-K." So the good news is that the senate appropriations chair got it. She understood. And David Randalls pointed out that if instead what we did is take that $670 million and put it into a general fund, we could support traditional school districts at about an 8% raise, and an ongoing 8% raise over the next several years. So we could add about six percentage points to the governor's 2.5 and come out with about 8.5% coming in for us to be able to fund our district in a way that we can provide better salaries and benefits for our people. So I just want you to know that this is something that we as a board take very seriously. We're putting our money where our mouth is. I'm taking time off my day job to go to Lansing to try to get somebody to listen to us and try to fund public education the way it needs to be funded. So I understand people's frustration. We're frustrated as well. We will do the best we can with the money that we have available, but what we're trying to do is try to increase the size of the pot so that in future years, we'll be able to improve on this. So I just want you to know that we're not sitting back, we're not closed-minded on this, we are actively campaigning, and I hope as Oakland Schools and the K-12 Alliance begin to press for this in the legislature, that the MEA and the TEA will be right with us in Lansing because we're going to need everybody's support in order to try to push the legislature to go beyond what the governor's recommending. So I just want, I didn't want everyone to leave before we could talk about this. So I just wanted to share that information with people because it is an area of intense frustration for everybody, and we hear you. We understand that we have not been able to keep up at the rate of inflation for you because our funding has not kept up with the rate of inflation. So that's all I want to say there. So if you want to leave now, you can leave now, but I saw people walking out, and I wanted as many people as possible to see, you know, what we're up against as a whole educational community.
Okay. All right. Now, yeah, thanks, Clint. Okay, we'll shift back.
I don't know if that made any difference, but-- Okay, we've got just a couple more items that we wanted to take to identify. As was mentioned earlier, I had an opportunity to share the summary of the report that was provided by Mr. Levinson from the New Solutions K-12. We did that at our last board workshop and wanted to then share with the community. Let the community know that we will have a summary of this, the summary document available on the website tomorrow, at latest on Thursday. It will reside under the blue pillar area of the strategic plan. So if you want to see the full report, you're welcome to do so. I'm going to move through this fairly quickly because, again, if you want to see the specifics, you're welcome to have access to that. Why did we even begin the conversation with New K-12? We identified several challenges, first of which was concerns that have been ongoing in our school district that oftentimes we remain somewhat in silos. It's not unlike a large organization to be work independent, to be working, excuse me, independently of one another, doing really good work, but working independently, and our goal is to flatten those silos and work across the organization in a meaningful way. So that was a goal of ours. We look regularly at our data, and it's clear to us that we have some stubborn areas that have not moved as we would like them to move. So to that end, we wanted to do something proactively and bring a third party in to help us better understand how we can do better work. The last is a return on investment. We spend quite a bit of money in our school district resource, rightly so, on interventions for students, and we want to make sure those interventions are being utilized appropriately. We also believe strongly in a number of things. We believe in systemness as an organization. By systemness, we mean that no matter where a student sits within our organization, they're met on a daily basis with high expectations, rigorous curriculum, and so forth, and we want to continue to promote that. We want to protect our core, which is our core, is teaching and learning. That's very important to us. Collaboration, we wanted to do whatever we're going to do collaboratively, is one of our core values. And lastly, we believe in best practice and we believe on leaning on experts in the field. So we want to, we do want to stand on the shoulders of those that are doing this work well across our nation, and we want to learn from them. So we engaged with NSK-12, that's Mr. Levinson, that you can see the timeline of that engagement started in summer, actually prior to the summer of '23 in planning through present. We've had upwards of 15 meetings and interactions with Mr. Levinson, whether in person or online. We have engaged, or he, I should say, has gauged over 100 stakeholders. You can see the stakeholders are identified there across the organization, including students, because student voice is extremely important. They are our largest constituent group and our end user, and we want to hear from them. Lastly, Mr. Levinson gathered data. All of the data of which he gathered is available on MySchoolData. Any data that you'd like to see relative to the Troy School District is available on MySchoolData. It's available, you can get to MySchoolData right through the transparency portal on our website. We chunked this work in three main areas. The first was building out an inclusive team, identifying folks that would help us in this work. We call that group the Guiding Coalition. We also needed to do some learning together. We needed to identify as an organization what we mean when we say MTSS or multi-tiered systems of support, excuse me. MTSS, multi-tiered systems of support. We wanted to make sure we had a consistent understanding of what that meant across our organization. The second workflow area was building out, was actually looking at what's happening within our organization. This is where Mr. Levinson spent the majority of his work, of his time within the school district. And then lastly, is our work moving forward, engaging with our collaborative planning group, our Guiding Coalition, in developing this work moving forward. We learned a number of things that he indicated are going well across our organization. We have very much, as he indicated, to be proud of as an organization. Teachers are hardworking, dedicated, and caring. We certainly know that. We have a community that believes deeply in their school system, great pride in their school system. We have a deep understanding of best practice. We have a well-defined multi-tiered system of support at the elementary level. It is not as well-defined at the secondary level, and that's one thing that we continue to work on. And we also know that in this district, we serve all of our students extremely well, including our students that find themselves in some of our most challenging categorical classrooms across our school district. He did also identify five areas, as were identified earlier by Dr. Melton. There were exactly five areas that he listed as opportunities. There are two of those areas you will see are bolded. We were asked to prioritize those opportunities because, as he indicated, you will not do all five right away, you will not do all five well if you choose to do them right away. So you as a group need to prioritize what you can do first. So we worked with our Guiding Coalition team to build consensus around what makes sense to start our work with, and we identified opportunities number two, as well as opportunity number four. Opportunity number two being more elementary-focused and opportunity number four being more secondary-focused. I'll highlight those two. Again, the report is available for anybody that wishes to take a closer look, specifically in the area of number two, of priority number two. What does it mean for our collaborative work moving forward? Ensuring access to core instruction for all students. Expanding coaching time at all levels, or so expanding time where we can at all levels. Ensuring students are taught by content area experts, so making sure that we reserve all instructional time, as much instructional time as possible, to be with those most highly, with those areas that are most highly qualified in those content areas. Thank you. Additional instructional time provided where possible and appropriate. You'll see the recommendations under number four are very similar. They're more focused at the secondary level. Again, access to core instruction, prioritizing students that are taught by content area experts, and then additional instructional time where possible and appropriate. So those are the two areas that our Guiding Coalition, we came to consensus with our Guiding Coalition, that we would focus on first. Next steps. Mr. Levinson indicated, and as he worked with our Guiding Coalition team to understand is, this is about a three-year plan. So as he indicated, there are five priorities. We're not going to do all five right away. Let's pick those that we believe we can do most effectively right away. That's why we prioritize number two and four. And this is, we're building, we will be building out approximately a three-year plan to do this work effectively. Our Guiding Coalition team has agreed we will meet quarterly, and we have members from across the organization as part of that Guiding Coalition team. Across the organization, across all levels on our team. And then finally, we will measure our success. We will continue to review student data to see how we're doing. We have a strong interest in moving some of those stubborn, to move achievement gaps in some of our subgroups, and we're committed to doing that work moving forward. That's why we engaged with Mr. Levinson and his team. So those are the next steps. Again, the report is, will be available, the summary report, on the website, no later than Thursday, so everybody can take a closer look at that and encourage you to circle back to board workshops into the future. We'll continue to be looking at this information and reporting back to the board how we're doing with respect to that. Great. Any new questions? I know we grilled the team extensively in the workshop, but anybody have any more? We're okay with that? Okay. Thank you for that summary. Okay, that moves us to other, other, I believe, right? So Dr. Wilson.
Hey.
Hello.
Hi. I actually have a handful of things tonight. One is I have the pleasure of being on the design committee for the new secondary work. And so it's been really exciting to be able to really listen, and so I think that something that we'll kind of see in, one of the things that's kind of like floating to the top is really the idea of the possibilities and the flexibility that shows up with new buildings. And so I'm just really excited to be able to have conversations at the governance level about the flexibilities in merit curriculum and then what that's going to look like as we engage teachers in dreaming. But it's just been really fun to hear both students and staff who are in there talk about like the dream, just dreams that they have of ways that things can collaborate and build across curriculum and a lot of shared spaces and just kind of the dreams with that. The dreams, though, lead to some concerns, and so I just want to kind of put these on our radar. One is that as we build new spaces, the equity in the programming changes that will come and how we want to make sure that we have equity among our buildings as we have programs in new buildings. And so that'll be something that we'll want to think about. So like as Smith gets to have learning communities, how do we make sure that we're equipping our people who don't have new construction to still have that new programming? And so that's going to be something that I think we'll, as a board, want to keep an eye on. And then-- And then school safety, like that keeps, that bubbles up too, like what, how do we make sure that we're safe? I really like the consultant from Fielding. He's really helpful, and I actually asked him if he would share his PowerPoint with all of us, so that you guys can see the, the data and stuff that he's providing. And he did a great job of addressing, I mean, things that we've talked about, that when you have a new building, you get new security protocol and, and all of that kind of stuff. So he's, he's done a great job. He's been a great facilitator, and I'm excited to keep sharing what I'm learning. So that's, that's kind of my like liaison-y moment to share with you all that is good. I also-
We appreciate that. You've been how many hours in the last two days? It's been two solid days, right?
I was going to say, it was two, seven, seven and a half hour days.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a lot of time.
It's the slog.
Yeah, so the, the backlog in my email is, is quite extensive. I've got quite a bit of work to catch up on tomorrow. I wanted to give kudos, though, to the, the, both of the theater companies for excellent plays and musicals, but also I really, especially last month when we were asked, we were reminded of the importance of thanking our volunteers. These plays, especially Athens, the play that goes wrong, extra kudos to the set team, the, the parents that come in and build these sets as volunteers. The play that goes wrong is all about the set. I mean, the, the set is the centerpiece of that story. And so just kudos to Mr. Dunbeck, who volunteers his time to build the set for, for the plays. So kudos to the volunteers who built the set. And then also this year, I just want to, I'm grateful for the diversity in our school district, and I want to wish both a meaningful Ramadan and a happy Easter to both religious groups that are in the spirit of celebrating those things between now and the next month.
Great. Okay. Dr. Vilepart.
I guess the only thing I just want to comment on is, again, how inspiring and impressive, you know, I mean, we had a lot of recognition tonight of the things that our students are doing, and again, I continue to be just so incredibly impressed with, you know, the talents of our students and the support of, you know, our staff and adults that work with them to help them realize their, their full potential.
Great. Mr. Hough?
Yeah, I was going to talk about the, the play that goes wrong as well, because I just saw that on Friday, and I never heard so many belly laughs in the room. It was amazing. And I've seen it professionally at the Fisher Theater, and the set design was just perfect. It lived up to everything that I remembered, so I want to give kudos to the volunteers and the students. They were just amazing. And then also, just a reminder, it's March is reading month. I know it's been kind of spread all over, but just a reminder, there's a lot of volunteer opportunities. Schools are doing a lot of different things, so I encourage parents and grandparents to go in and see if you can be involved and, and read to our students, so.
Great. Ms. Ali.
Yeah, I just, it was in the weekly news letter, but I, I do want to say congratulations to the Athens Girls Powerlifting Team. They won the state championship, and I think this was their second year in a row. And then the Troy United Synchronized Swim Team also won a state championship, which is really impressive. Sometimes we, we focus on, you know, soccer, basketball, and football, and, but we have a lot of, you know, great student athletes who are achieving a lot, so I just want to say congratulations.
Great. Mr. Hoff.
Last month, thank you. I mentioned that the Baker Middle School Eighth Grade Orchestra was scheduled to compete in a competition at Warren Woods High School. At the time, on February 29th, they sounded really great, but I guess they totally wowed the judges and the people at Warren Woods, because I'm proud to say that the Eighth Grade Orchestra from Baker came in first. And that is an amazing achievement, and I'm very proud of the conductor, but more so the students who practiced until their fingers bled probably, that produced such beautiful sound, I heard. But fine arts is, is an important part of our curriculum, and when we can go to other districts and show how good we are and how great we are, it says a lot about our district. So thank you for the Eighth Grade Orchestra who came in first.
Thank you. Ms. Ane.
All right. I have a couple of things. First, I guess echo the March is reading month. I had a chance to read to a bunch of classrooms, and it was so much fun seeing those little kiddos. So yes, please do take a chance, take some time and read to the little kids. You have probably about this week left, because next week is spring break, and so you can't do it anyway, so try and get that.
There's going to be some lonely reading around here the, the last week.
Exactly. Next week, we won't be able to. Mr. Hoff and I actually had two visits. One visited the Oakland Schools Technical Campus, the OTAC. It was amazing to see all the different things that they can offer, and from computer technology, welding, machining, and all kinds of things, and cosmetology. And I know a lot of our high school students will get a chance to enroll and use it, but I don't know how many of them do it. Hopefully, hopefully they do take advantage of that, and there's a lot of choices left for them. And I also went with Mr. Hoff to the Troy High's Robotics, talking about volunteering. That team does so much work, and there's so much, so many parent hours. I, I know that students do a lot of work, but there's also a lot of parenting time. Parent volunteering involved, and kudos to all of those as well, all of them as well. And they did make it a point that they are very thankful for the bond, and that they're going to get a new space so that they don't have to keep lugging all that equipment from the, from the gym, back to their storage room, and back to the gym, and they are looking forward to the dedicated space. Hopefully, that is going to come in the next couple of years, I guess. And then yesterday, I was at the Troy City Council meeting along with Melissa Prowess from Oakland's County Parks, and we explained to them the Turtle Woods Project and the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund grant application. The city council passed a resolution supporting the application, and will be included as part of the grant application. And hopefully, that will help get our grant, this year, and get that going. And finally, I do want to wish our Muslim friends and families Happy Ramadan, our Christian friends and families Happy Easter to coming, and our Hindu friends and families Happy Holi, which is coming next Monday. That's it. Thank you. And Happy Spring Break to all the families.
Thank you.
Yeah, just, just a couple of things. I had the opportunity, along with Ms. Greifer, to go over to Barnard today. I was invited by Ms. Simon, we were invited by Ms. Simon for the fourth graders, did their cultural celebration. They, they were very excited to both sing and show their artistic abilities and demonstrate through, through costume, their, their heritage and so forth. So kudos to, to the folks over at Barnard in the fourth grade for that, and thanks to Ms. Simon for the invite. Goes without saying that spring break is upon us. I do want to say, I know I don't have to remind Nareda and Jayla and Mackenzie of that, but Mackenzie, thanks for filling in today. We appreciate it. But I wish all of our staff, students, families that will be traveling for spring break a safe and, and relaxing, a spring break, extended spring break, weekend and, and the week. Also, upon return for spring break, we will be, our team will be joining in our spring updates, so those will start as soon as April 2nd. About 50 or so meetings will occur over the course of April and into May, so our team will be dividing and conquering, hitting all of those. We're going to talk about where we are with bond, we're going to talk about budget, we're going to talk about some of the other items, our guiding coalition, our work with NSK-12, and so forth, and answer questions that both our staff and, and parents have regarding what's happening within our building, so we look forward to that.
Okay. Great, thanks. All right, mine aren't so fun, but I wanted, I wanted to go back for a moment to, because you had asked a question about the last two slides, so let's talk about the Lansing trip again, just so that we're kind of clear on what we're talking about here. So there, and I ask Rick to be able to, you know, make sense of it if I start babbling up here foolishly. So when you look at the Snyder solution, when MIPSers was upside down, you know, essentially he's been pulling more and more funds from the, from the school aid fund to support retirement, right? The retirement funds, and then also the healthcare costs associated with retirees. So the healthcare cost related with retirees is now funded fully. So that, that money that's already budgeted comes in every year, can be reallocated someplace else. So best explanation, explanation I heard on this, as a way of thinking about it, at least from my own brain, is if you budget it every month for your mortgage payment and a car payment, and all of a sudden you finish paying for the car, you've now freed up that money to fix your leaky roof, or, you know, whatever you need. So, so the challenge then is, it's a money grab, right? It's $670 million, and so we have to make sure that that money doesn't get grabbed for other things. So it's, so the, the challenge that we put forth with, with Sarah Anthony was sort of thinking about pre-K to 12. Let the school, stop, stop dictating how the money's used here in Lansing, put it in our general fund, and let us use the money the way we need to use the money. Because there are going to be some districts that are going to be well-positioned to integrate preschool, and there are going to be other districts that are going to need a lot of physical plant upgrades in order for that to happen. And if you, if you force all the money into one category, you don't allow that flexibility for people to, to, to do what they want and to spend what they want. There's another key measure here that David Randle's calculated, and it was an eye-opener for me. In 2000, in, in 2004, 14% of the money that came to us as wages and benefits went back to the state to cover retirement costs. Last year, that was 48% of every dollar that came to our district for funds got pulled back to the state to cover-
Forty-eight percent of the extra dollars.
Forty-eight percent of the funds they pay us for operating that goes into salary and benefits. Forty-eight percent of the dollars that go into our fund, go right back. That's, that's that weird thing that, that Rich, that Rick shows us every year, where it's like, oh, look, we got more money. No, we don't. It's gone, right? But I had never seen it calculated out as a percentage and to understand the difference. So not only are we not meeting the rate of inflation, that we're operating at 60% of, you know, of, of what we were in 2004, but one of the primary reasons for that is that money is getting pulled right back out. So because the, this fund for the, for the retirement benefits is called OPEB, so there's a new acronym for, for you. So OPEB is fully funded. The idea is that you could take, the, the $670,000 is essentially, it's about 100, sorry, it's about 670 million, about 100 million, each 100 million is worth about one percentage point. So the idea is, so you, you could, you could basically clawback 6.7% for us and, and for every district in the state. The beauty of that is the only, the only districts that would receive that money would be traditional districts that paid into MIPSers. So it doesn't go to charters, it doesn't go to online schools, it goes back to traditional school districts. So it's a way of providing more funding for traditional school districts without also providing equal funding to these, these other school entities that don't have the legacy costs that publics, that traditional public schools have. So I, I will tell you that Sarah Anthony's chief of staff emailed me back, and, and they, they double-checked the numbers that we put in front of them the next day, you know, on Monday was like, yep, we're getting confirmation that what you're saying is absolutely right. And, and David Randle's presented it to Sarah Anthony as, this is a chance to solve an absolute systematic problem with the way we fund education in the state. And I think she sees that. And, and what we told her was, if you do that, we will all stand next to you on the microphone and say, you know, we'll call, we'll name the bill after you, we'll do whatever it takes, but you will get political credit for this, because it's a, it would be a game-changer for us to be able to, to bring that money back and keep it going on an annual basis. So that's what we started. Dave Randle's is working with K-12 Alliance, they are working with PR firms to figure out a way for us to get that message back to Lansing. We will probably engage our public at some point and ask them to, to, to write in to Lansing. And, and we, we hit it at the right time. We really had to be there in March, because everything starts solidifying by April. So Sarah said this was, this was absolutely the right timing to, to bring this in. So I'm very cautiously optimistic that, you know, and the idea is, you could take that 6.7% increase and add it to the governor's 2.5. So you're not taking away from the governor's 2.5, you're just figuring out a way to do it better and to do it smart. So that, that's what we're, what we were working on on Friday. So I just want to make sure that if you, if you got lost at the end of those slides, because I did, so that's why I said, don't worry about it, I'll talk you about it on Tuesday, because I've been like, I don't know. So, okay. So anyway, I wanted to give you an update on that, so I'll just say, stay tuned on that. And then I also wanted to address the, the number of concerns around our bathroom situation, right? Our bathroom policy. And the comment that we're hiding behind Title IX is an interesting interpretation of following the law. Title IX is the federal law, and the, the Office of Civil Rights has been very effective at suing districts that don't follow federal law. So I, what I've told anyone who's talked to me about this in the community is, if you like the way this is handled, based on federal law, let your, let your senator, your federal senator, and let your, your federal representative know that you like this. If you don't like it, let them know, but we're the wrong entity to be complaining to, because we, we took an oath of office, and we need to follow the law. And the law is a federal law. So if this is going to change, it, it would change at a federal level. And if anyone is still here who, who is objecting to our policy, I have a 12-page letter from the ACLU that lays out all of the, the case law that demonstrates that if you try to go against that, how, how quickly you're going to be sued into following compliance to that law. But I'm happy to share this with anyone who wants to understand why the policy is laid out the way it is. So the other thing for all of you is, I had you to make a copy of this, because this came out, we were there on Friday, and this, this report came out on Monday, I think, and this is written by an economist from Michigan State and an economist from Wayne State University, and it's a full, thorough assessment of the destruction of public funding at public schools in Michigan, and, and actually our general tax structure and why we're having such a hard time paying for things in the state. But they, they don't mince words. They lay it right out. So we forwarded this to Senator Anthony and said, if you want to build a coalition, here are two economists with good street creds that lay out why we're suffering the way we are. So I, I had you to make copies for all of you, because I thought that all of, you should all read it, because it is really good, and it certainly can address, if someone says, why can't you tighten your belt? This is a good way of explaining why we can.
And then we'll be on the website as well?
Um, we could put that on the website, if you, yeah, we could. Sure, why not? So public can see it. It's a, it's a public report. Okay. And then the last, let's see if there's anything. The last thing, no, two things. One is, thank you, Patel. She's basically taken on Section 1 for the last two weeks or three weeks, being our spokesperson and being quoted in the paper, and meeting the public there, and then being, representing the board at the, at the school, the city council meeting. I appreciate all that. That's, that's your time, and that's valuable, so thank you for doing that. And then I do have just a general update for the community in terms of where we're at with our negotiations with our TEA. So I'll just read it. "The district and TEA teams had their most productive bargaining session to date on Wednesday, March 13th. We have now had a total of eight bargaining sessions. The district has offered language proposals on all of the prohibited topics, along with proposals on wages, calendar, and a variety of other relevant topics. We have reached tentative agreements on a number of language proposals and anticipate continued progress towards additional TAs." TAs are-
Tentative agreements.
Tentative agreements, thank you. "The teams have agreed to six additional sessions in April," which is good. I think we've, we've got a nice intense schedule, so we can get together often enough to keep the conversation going. "April 3rd, 10th, 12th, 16th, 29th, and, and May 3rd." So I'm hoping, once we come back from the spring break, everybody will roll up their sleeves and will be able to work out the remaining differences. "We anticipate these sessions will be productive with the goal of achieving a successor agreement that is sustainable and focuses on our goals of attracting and retaining great teachers. We're ready, willing, and able to continue to bargain in good faith, and we anticipate that our, our TEA team is as well." And with that, I would like to, is there anything? Oh, next meetings.
Workshop.
Workshop. I should just make you do that. Workshop on April 2nd in the administration building at 6:00 PM. And then the next board meeting will be here-
Sixteenth.
On April 16th at 7:00 PM. Did I forget anything?
Nope.
Okay. Then we are adjourned. Thank you.